Dean, do you want to send a quick text off to Tom? Make sure he's not having a problem with the leak or something.
Yeah, I had trouble getting it. I tried a couple of times.
Yeah. All right, Kim, you can make your complaint again.
I'm sure that I am firmly convinced and I know very well that all of the SLATE product work like just like really, really well. And most of the office products work really, really well with the exception of teams. So. Sorry Scott, I went into a tirade about how I hate.
I know, you did. We listened to him.
And SharePoint and SharePoint.
About it also. Okay. I think now we have our key players. Hi, welcome Tom. Quick audio check on you. Make sure we can hear you when we come off mute.
All right.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Otherwise then we'll ask everybody to mute up so that we don't hear any background noises and interesting, whatever commentations that might happen. So great. All right, Courtney, I think you've already started recording.
Yep, we're recording.
All righty, so welcome everybody. This is Mayor Marion Kloss. I welcome you to the City of Clydesdale, our city council meeting for Tuesday, August the 9th, 2022. Again, this meeting is held now in hybrid fashion. Some of us are here, Sean and I and Courtney, and we have a few individuals in the audience. So this is great. And then, as you can obviously tell, others that are joining us remotely. So thank you for that. Courtney called the order already. What's her role call look like?
All council members are present.
Thank you. And I'll invite everybody to stand where you are for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic where we just stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's the last time TCU had to say that, huh?
High school problems.
All right, thank you all. On our agenda, you can see that we have the information about our hybrid format under section 1.1. We're pretty much schooled on that by now. So again, if you have a question or a comment at the appropriate times, I'll ask that you raise your hand and if that's difficult, get our attention. And good demonstration by Councilmember Akamovich. Hand up. Oh, and off mute. Off mute.
I'm also demonstrating how not to come off of mute clearly. I would just have my hand up in anticipation of item two. Sorry.
Okay, you're so quick. I like that. Thank you. All right, so without further ado, then I ask for item number two and approval of the agenda or give me any amendments, please. Now I can go to Councilmember Akamovich.
I move adding an item upfront as 5.1, Discussion of Police Exit Interview Process. I'd also like to ask, reflecting a conversation with Councilmember Friedman about relative importance of items, that after the discussion of the police exit interview process, we then go on to stormwater, followed by the change in form of government item, followed by land use, followed by enforcement, followed by draft division and celebration, please. Thank you. And hand down.
All ready. Dean, your hands up.
Yeah. Part of the reason for the order as it stands is that we have someone from Blue Line here to present early on and paying them by the hour. So hoping to let them do their presentation and then leave.
Councilmember Friedman, I'm fine putting that one up front and sticking with the rest of the order.
Um, yeah, but I'm only a guest today, as you can see up on the list of participants. So I guess it doesn't matter. I'm joking, it doesn't matter to me. Fine. I understand you. Both these.
Great.
So I'm hearing that we'll do 5.1.
Drafted and followed by the others.
Okay, 5.1 is planned and then adding police exit interview next with the rest of the reorder that you have. Is that what I'm understanding?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional changes? May I have a second on those amendments? Thank you, Steve. All those in favor, say aye or wave your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
There you go. Anyone opposed? Or abstained? All right, we will go ahead and move with that agenda. Thank you. All right, now we are at section three. This is for public comment and I anticipate that you may have something to say. And I know we have several residents that appear to be online. This is your opportunity to share any comments. We don't have any public hearings to contend with. So we'll be fine with that. Again, we just ask you to stick around a three-minute timeframe and to be kind and respectful in the communications that you offer. And again, raise your hand or give my attention and we'll let you know what call upon. So your hand goes up. So I ask that you just state your name and indicate if you're a resident or not for the City of Clydesdale.
Okay, should I stand up or?
Whatever you're. Dean, do you want to send a quick text off to Tom? Make sure he's not having a problem with the leak or something.
Yeah, I had trouble getting it. I tried a couple of times.
Yeah. All right, Kim, you can make your complaint again.
I'm sure that I am firmly convinced and I know very well that all of the SLATE product work like just like really, really well. And most of the office products work really, really well with the exception of teams. So. Sorry Scott, I went into a tirade about how I hate.
I know, you did. We listened to him.
And SharePoint and SharePoint.
About it also. Okay. I think now we have our key players. Hi, welcome Tom. Quick audio check on you. Make sure we can hear you when we come off mute.
All right.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Otherwise then we'll ask everybody to mute up so that we don't hear any background noises and interesting, whatever commentations that might happen. So great. All right, Courtney, I think you've already started recording.
Yep, we're recording.
All righty, so welcome everybody. This is Mayor Marion Kloss. I welcome you to the City of Clydesdale, our city council meeting for Tuesday, August the 9th, 2022. Again, this meeting is held now in hybrid fashion. Some of us are here, Sean and I and Courtney, and we have a few individuals in the audience. So this is great. And then, as you can obviously tell, others that are joining us remotely. So thank you for that. Courtney called the order already. What's her role call look like?
All council members are present.
Thank you. And I'll invite everybody to stand where you are for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic where we just stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's the last time TCU had to say that, huh?
High school problems.
All right, thank you all. On our agenda, you can see that we have the information about our hybrid format under section 1.1. We're pretty much schooled on that by now. So again, if you have a question or a comment at the appropriate times, I'll ask that you raise your hand and if that's difficult, get our attention. And good demonstration by Councilmember Akamovich. Hand up. Oh, and off mute. Off mute.
I'm also demonstrating how not to come off of mute clearly. I would just have my hand up in anticipation of item two. Sorry.
Okay, you're so quick. I like that. Thank you. All right, so without further ado, then I ask for item number two and approval of the agenda or give me any amendments, please. Now I can go to Councilmember Akamovich.
I move adding an item upfront as 5.1, Discussion of Police Exit Interview Process. I'd also like to ask, reflecting a conversation with Councilmember Friedman about relative importance of items, that after the discussion of the police exit interview process, we then go on to stormwater, followed by the change in form of government item, followed by land use, followed by enforcement, followed by draft division and celebration, please. Thank you. And hand down.
All ready. Dean, your hands up.
Yeah. Part of the reason for the order as it stands is that we have someone from Blue Line here to present early on and paying them by the hour. So hoping to let them do their presentation and then leave.
Councilmember Friedman, I'm fine putting that one up front and sticking with the rest of the order.
Um, yeah, but I'm only a guest today, as you can see up on the list of participants. So I guess it doesn't matter. I'm joking, it doesn't matter to me. Fine. I understand you. Both these.
Great.
So I'm hearing that we'll do 5.1.
Followed by the others.
Okay, 5.1 is planned and then adding police exit interview next with the rest of the reorder that you have. Is that what I'm understanding?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional changes? May I have a second on those amendments? Thank you, Steve. All those in favor, say aye or wave your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
There you go. Anyone opposed? Or abstained? All right, we will go ahead and move with that agenda. Thank you. All right, now we are at section three. This is for public comment and I anticipate that you may have something to say. And I know we have several residents that appear to be online. This is your opportunity to share any comments. We don't have any public hearings to contend with. So we'll be fine with that. Again, we just ask you to stick around a three-minute timeframe and to be kind and respectful in the communications that you offer. And again, raise your hand or give my attention and we'll let you know what call upon. So your hand goes up. So I ask that you just state your name and indicate if you're a resident or not for the City of Clydesdale.
Okay, should I stand up or?
Whatever you're. Writing it in into his civil service documents as well. We actually went there first to say, hey, is it one of the functions of the Civil Service Committee? I would have thought that it would have been spelled out and it wasn't. But our stuff, as the chief said, is a little bit dated and we, it's perfect timing for revision. So I would love to know if I came on as a Civil Service Committee member, that it's not only, you know, part of the interviewing and any disciplinary action, but it would be seeking for a representative for exit interviews. Kind of makes sense that they would know that upfront.
Yeah.
Dean Roland?
Yeah, so just super quick point of clarification, Yaro pays 25% of the cost of the police department. Yeah, just.
Sorry.
Yeah, and I know that Mayor Harris had expressed her interest and desire for that too. And in fact, probably to Chief, we would need to make sure that Yaro has an opportunity to have a listen at the table as well. You got to be careful not to make it too large, but something that would be meaningful. And then our attorney may have to say something worse, more important, right?
Just a real small point of clarification, just so there's no misunderstanding later. It's actually the mayor's call whether to have exit interviews. She can delegate that to the chief, but she's the CEO of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so take care of 5.2. Making sure that councilmembers Muramoto and Jones, you're okay? Okay, seeing that's not. All righty, get organized here. Now I'm moving down to what was the old 5.4, change in form of government petition. So Tom, I think.
Super sorry, I think.
Oh. Go ahead.
Super sorry, I think. I think we had stormwater down next. Sorry.
So you did. Thank you. Can't read my handwriting. Sorry, stormwater. Here you go, Sean. We're going to kick it up to you.
All right, very good. Good evening again, Sean, Public Works Director. So in the stormwater section, this one was specific to the 17th Stormwater Project in issue. So we did have a subcommittee meeting, I believe, last week with councilmembers Friedman and Muramoto. The, the summary of this particular issue is that to date, we have not been able to secure the easements or agreement to easements from the subject property owners. So of the three property owners, we have one with tentative agreement, one refusal, and then one that is undecided currently. So this kind of relates to a topic later on in the agenda, but so the recommendation was not to be, not to award the Schedule B work as it relates to 17th. So as we're, you know, this staff report was written Friday, there's been some changes in, in both the Small Drainage Program bids and what our recommendations are there. And then also, we're continuing to work with those property owners. So, you know, I would say though we still have not been able to secure the easements, there is still hope that we could do it. So this memo still outlines the city's current options available to it. I think from what my understanding was of our subcommittee meeting and just of the will of council in general related to this issue, this is not a closed, a closed issue. So even though we may not even make this construction season or this fall for construction, it is my understanding that it is the will of the council to move forward and, and offer solutions and work towards solutions with those property owners on an extended timeline or in another fashion. So that's kind of in a nutshell what that staff report says. Again, with a little bit more current information in it. Again, generally, these are all the options that we've had all along. This is informational only. Again, some of this is influenced by the Small Drainage Program bids and what's going on in there. So I know that's a lot of information, but happy to discuss further details as you wish.
All right, who has questions or comments? Sense of Dana? All right.
Here, I'll jump in since Kim and I met in there and he can verify the information that we learned.
Yeah.
The issue, the issue we have is that there is one particular homeowner who was not signing the easement and that's sounds, my understanding is without that easement, we can't go do the work that, that would protect the other homeowners who are not in the easement area that are being flooded on a regular basis. And I, you know, I, my opinion is we should do everything we possibly can to get that easement or to get the rights to do that work. And subject to that, my hope would be we would do everything we can to help the homeowner who is getting flooded because the person won't sign the easement. And at least do some repairs and maybe some drainage help and support him in trying to make sure he isn't hurt down the road. Kim, does that kind of validate where do you think we were?
Yeah, you know, I'm saddened by the fact that we seem to be in, in, in a bit of somewhere between a legal quagmire with the City of Bellevue and the homeowners. I, I too would love to help the homeowner that's getting flooded. It, you know, based on the advice that we're being given. However, our hands are rather tied. Like Steve said, I would love to find a way to go figure out how to go fix this without getting into, you know, any type of legal jeopardy. I guess, you know, I would, I would kind of ask, plead, beg the city attorney to kind of see if, Tom, is there, is there some kind of negotiated way that we can help this without digging ourselves another hole? And then I get the legal complexities. That's, that's not, that's a rhetorical question. It's not something for you to answer tonight. But you know, it certainly would be nice because I think that, you know, given all the stuff that's going on, who knows what next winter is going to bring? If we have a mild winter, great. If we have a catastrophe, then I can just see stuff like going on in Death Valley and Kansas and all over the world that, you know, we get this, you know, thousand-year rain and we've just now destroyed houses. We haven't, but the rain destroys houses and it's just sad that we, you know, it could be a bit of a preventable. And at the same time, I would also please beg with the residents to help the city solve the problem. Because, you know, they are as not liable, but they can certainly be a solution to a problem that affects multiple citizens. Sorry, off my soapbox.
Councilmember Akamovich?
I wanted to say that for all the challenge that's coming up right now, I think that of the residents involved, I think they get that the city is trying to do the right thing. And they, I think, respect that. And I just wanted to say that even though it looks, it's uncertain what's actually going to happen. I'm, I feel good that, you know, I've gotten communication from one of the residents down there that says, hey, this is complex and, you know, I sincerely believe that the city is trying to do the right thing. So I think that that's progress right there. And I want to say thank you because I think that reflects the work of Sean and a bunch of folks on city staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Let me see here. Let me go to Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, what is the objection of the one homeowner that doesn't want to grant the easement? What's their issue?
Yeah, the, the main reservation is the vegetation loss. So again, this is a, you know, more or less a 25 or 20-foot width of, width of removal. So all the trees and hedges and vegetation that swath pretty much are casualties of the project. And there's some significant vegetation. So the, with the two who are hesitant or, or not interested, it is, that is the primary motivator. It's too much impact on, on their property.
And if they, if they did agree to it, would they be able to replant after the work was done?
Yeah, the, the way we've talked about it is replanting, but not trees. So adding some limitations in the easement. But yes, we've, we've talked about that as an option. So, yeah. And we've, we've tried to provide those details. Again, I know on one of the property owners, it was just, they felt like it was just too much. And that is ultimately one of the other property owners, same, you know, same hesitancy is, is, is those details, which is completely understandable. We knew that is, is going to be a difficult issue. So we still, and Councilmember Akamovich, you know, mentioned, and I do believe there's still paths forward here. I still think there's opportunity for this to work out. It's just what this project required to try to meet this timeline was rapid agreement and consent. And, and, you know, we didn't get that and that's okay. You know, we can continue to come back at it. But that's, that's kind of where we're, we're at at the moment.
And it's probably important so that there's not too many cooks in the kitchen is if you have a game plan, Sean, in how you're going to try to meet and get a question, get an answer, reestablish trust and let it feel comfortable and such, then I'm hoping that you can kind of get it to where maybe they will revisit the, the yes.
Yeah.
Dean Roland?
Yeah, I wanted to kind of expand a little bit on one thing that Councilmember Akamovich said. And that is that Mr. Tozer has been working daily, very diligently on this pro, on this project and communicating on a real regular basis with all these folks. So progress will happen. It just may not be as fast as everybody likes. So.
And I know one of the big markers was, you know, can we get something done before the fall rains? And I know this, the timing is going to be difficult. All right, does that get everybody up to date? Any further comments or questions on 17th and 17th Stormwater? Okay, seeing none. Then I believe we move down to change in form of government petition. And I think all we were going to do is just make sure everybody knew that we had the explanatory statement that went in according to deadline. And I don't think there's anything more, Tom, that you were going to reinforce other than to indicate that as such.
That's correct. There's really nothing more to say. It's been filed and the whole process is underway to prepare the voter's pamphlet and have the election ready for a vote in the November general election.
Thank you. And I do believe, Dean, you sent a reminder to the pro and con committee chairs today that their statements were due. So hopefully everything got all taken care of in that regard.
Both the statements and the rebuttals.
Correct. Questions or comments from council? All right. Then we move up to.
Sorry, I was, I was, I was slow to come off of, I was slow to come off of mute there. Sorry.
Okay, go for it.
Councilmember Friedman, I wasn't sure if you wanted to share any of the feedback that you and I discussed, if you just wanted to move on.
Yeah, I'm prepared to move on.
Okay, great.
All right. Then we have the Title 17 Land Use Code update. Sean, you've been a busy person and good participation in council at meetings. So there's several topics there. I'll let you kind of leave what you know and then see where the questions or comments come.
Yeah, I, I think I have a little bit of this. I can overview. And again, sorry for being off camera. I'm behind the kind of the duty station here. So just behind where the camera sits. But, uh, we did have a really good meeting with the, I guess, the code enforcement subcommittee, Councilmembers Akamovich and Friedman. I think we had a really great discussion. I think we made a lot of progress towards, you know, you know, understanding each other and understanding where we're at and how to move forward. I can't say that there's, you know, we've necessarily produced fruits from that effort yet, just because staff has been so busy on, on other duties. But I really felt like we had some good moments in there. And I'd be happy for the council members to fill in as they see fit on that particular issue. But.
So I don't know if Councilmembers Akamovich or Friedman have your.
Yeah. Yeah, briefly, I think Sean's being a little too modest on that front. I think it was a strong meeting for the sake of rest of council on the same page. It looks like there will be dropping the requirement on complaints for it to come from a neighbor and that the city will respond to complaints from anyone. In particular, there's a really interesting focus on practice. So instead of describing the policy, it's like there's a flow chart with, that I think will do an amazing job, amazingly good job setting expectations for residents with the specifics and, and what will happen. It's also not clear yet, and it's fine that it's not clear yet, what the plan is around retaliatory complaints or weaponization of, of complaints. Yeah, that's, those are, those are my brief notes. I thought it was super good.
Councilmember Friedman, anything more to add?
Well, I agree, I agree with Dean. I it was all encompassing. Talking about specificity on some of the codes and how, on, you'll hear this later. I learned a new word rather than policy. It's what is practice. That's what Sean taught me. It's a good descriptive word on how we handle specific areas of the code and define it. Which is, I think, less confusing than when we talk about policy sometimes. And then we rolled it into really a way to communicate with the community. And I want, and I think this is, we're on our way towards the next step, which would be to you know, to get more details on this, the specifics of how we make sure that these practices are implemented and the community is notified. That to me is the key. They need to, the community needs to know what to do in order to comply.
What are the next steps, Sean?
So staff is going to work on updating the, gosh, what's the page? Kind of, we had this like one pager. I can't think of the right term for it, but it was more of like a policy or practice statement. And then also some edits on the flow chart. We talked about adding some timeliness pieces. And, and really a lot of it is, it's communication based. So it's follow-up actions with the, the complainant and then also notifications to, I guess, the person being complaining against. So there was again, a lot of good stuff. Sarah had a lot of great input. But again, I think that was just, the emphasis was really on making sure we're, we're closing communication loops and setting expectations with residents and then following through on that. So again, there's some document edits for us to do as staff. Sarah may or may not have been working on that recently. Again, some, I know some of us have been buried. So. Um, Sarah may or may not have been working on that recently, again, some, I know some of us have been buried, so.
All right, does that get the rest of council up to date, where we are with the enforcement? Dean Roland?
So we kind of bounced around a little bit there between enforcement and the Title Seventeen, is that what we did, or am I not following?
I think their meeting was on the code enforcement policy, so that's what we just heard. Just making sure that all on the table.
So, I guess I'm confused with our renumbering, are we on update regarding code enforcement, or are we on Title Seventeen Land Use Code Update?
Yeah, we're on uh, the old five point two.
Title Seventeen Land Use Code Update.
Okay, so then the only other thing I wanted to add to that then was the permanent supportive and transitional housing, that is, I, my understanding is that's about ninety percent uh, ready to go, so uh, there should be some uh, assuming everything's okay on the blue line front, that um, there should be something ready to come to a committee in the very near future.
So that'll be the September council meeting?
Uh, well, I believe the next step for that would probably be our, our committee and then the council meeting, so yeah, hopefully.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
There were three other bullets, but I think that's just making sure we're keeping ourselves honest, that we have other topics that we need to get to, not that we have time to get to it, but that it's going to be continued hot on the stove type of thing, is that my understanding? Okay, I'm seeing head on. Anything else for the old five point two?
Um, Mayor, I didn't put my hand up, if I can add one item. From my standpoint, I really appreciated uh, the staff, they have good knowledge, they know that, they know the community, they know their areas. And they came to our meeting prepared and uh, with comments and information that made it a lot more productive for us. So thank you, I appreciate it, I want, want everyone to know that, so.
Great.
Agreed.
All right, um, so next we move on to um, the old five point five, which is the new five point five, so we're on track, uh, which is the update regarding code enforcement. If that is correct, um, okay, so um, where are we at with this? Yeah.
Okay, so, I was I was just going to go in the order of, of the attachments um, that, that are here. Um, there is an item last month. The, the SF consistent code enforcement, nail a few. Scroll to the bottom of that, councilmember Friedman asked some questions, rather than use council time. Councilmember Friedman and I met with Rich, who is amazing, um, who answered the questions thoroughly. And down around page two, there is a summary of what we heard uh, from Rich around why the private lane turn on south isn't being enforced there. Um, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that the council was aware of this. And if this is not accurate in some way, this would be a good time to tell us. Because for, this is what I, I think councilmember Friedman and I heard. We wrote up the summary together. Uh, Rich responded with some data, and so I'm, I'm, I'm thinking this is accurate, but if it isn't, we should, we should get on the same page.
And Rich, I wanted to make sure that um, that was reflective of your conversation and, and a good summation as well. Did you have a chance to review?
Yes, I did. The only thing that I want to just say is on the roads that I gave you, that those were public roads and not private roads. The other roads in the city, those, those are the public roads that don't have turnarounds on them.
Well, that's a big deal.
Okay. Yeah.
It's a good point.
So, cool, glad we're on the same page. Sorry. Yeah.
Um, so it looks like, again, between Public Works and the Fire Department, there is that level of discernment and decision-making. Okay, let me see, councilmember Roland?
Uh, yeah, I just, um, I, I appreciate the, um, the work that you guys did. Um, um, being the, uh, the end of that fourth bullet, just to explain some of the complexities of what goes on here. Um, um, it, it would be interesting, and I'm, I'm going to bring it up because it's a deep dive. But at one point in time, I know my dad um, basically gifted the road to the city. I don't know that it was ever accepted, it was uh, presumably a, uh, you know, became an avenue which made it a public street. But because of the fact that there wasn't enough uh, ingress egress for a fire truck, I don't know that that was ever accepted. So, um, but that was like probably nineteen fifty-six. So the complexities of, of what goes on here, um, um, it, it, it never ceases to amaze me. So again, thank you, Rich, and, and all the research that you guys do. Um, and we've barely scratched the surface um, in, in terms of, of untangling some of this, this web that's happened years and years and years ago, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yeah, the, to me, the real issue we're, we're dealing with here is really practice versus the specificity of a code. Practice, to use Sean's term, because you know, in talking to Rich, and this is, seems to be the case in several, in, in several areas of our code. Practice is not exactly, is followed based upon analysis of the safety issue rather than a requirement to be specific to what the code says. In the case of the turnaround, he, he made it clear that the Fire Department understands and accepts and has, is agreed that they're just going to back out when there's not a turnaround. And so he, what he's telling us is they're not, they're not enforcing that part of the code. So that's practice, understood, seems reasoned. And some of the other, couple of other items here, that's the case too, and, and to me, the issue is, is what do we do with the ordinance we have now? And how do we address it? Same thing on the fire hydrants and the same thing on some other items. And there may be some I don't even know. So do you amend the code? Do you change it? Do you eliminate it? You know, do you publish the practice over, over the, uh, over the code as the specificity of it? And if that's the case, um, as long as we're addressing safety properly and the Fire Department, in this case, emergency vehicles agree to this and understand it, then, then the question becomes, where do we go from there? And what do we do to make sure the public understands that? And I think it solves a lot of other problems coming down the road on, you know, that could, that can transpire on code issues, so.
Well, you just summed up the work of the comprehensive plan in Title Seventeen, so.
I might have.
Yeah, I mean, each and every single one of those items has to have a huge level of discernment. Uh, the only thing Rich taught me, uh, just in case the um, residents listening in don't, don't know or didn't read it. My understanding, Rich, is that if there were no turnaround, those homes have to be constructed, it's, they're going through the, the, the construction process with um, sprinklers in the homes, so that there's uh, the binding of time. Uh, that, that may be because the fire truck can't get quick access. If I, if I've been taught correctly by you, that's my understanding.
Yes, you're right, Mayor.
Yeah.
They require sprinklers on them, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There, and, and if there's something new that would be required, but you've got, you've got other, other issues out there now, other roads out there where where the Fire Department has understood that as well and realizes it. And so it, it isn't, it isn't completely about turnarounds here. It's about, it's about the practices that we follow versus the codes as it's written. And I had, I understand, Mayor, that a lot of it's Title Seventeen, but if we're following that practice now, we're following it and it's, and it's implemented in, in its own way. And that is worth making sure it's clear to the public and that we uh, that we under, that we know those areas in which we have a practice that's different from the code. And why?
Um, let me see, councilmember Jones?
Right, thank you. I just wanted to add that uh, that was a very useful analysis. And it was focused on uh, emergency vehicles in the sense of police and fire. But in these areas, and I'm not on a, a lane or a road that has this issue. But it seems to me there's a lot of really more vehicles that are involved in not having a turnaround, such as uh, delivery vehicles, food. I mean, so many things are being delivered that uh, struggle with turnarounds along with emergency vehicles, that this is a deeper problem. Uh, and as uh, we're planning, we'll get into, I think, more of all of this when we deal with this at the Title Seventeen review part. Uh, I just wanted to add that.
The second avenue, which I've wondered about for twenty years. Um, we, we, we wouldn't have known. So I'm, I'm, I'm just, I, I'm asking sincerely, like, is the guidance to leave everything alone? Is the guidance to try to change the municipal code to reflect practice? Is it something else? I, I, I get that it's not black white. I'm looking to uh, Mr. Brewbaker, I think.
Or Rich, perhaps?
Well, is it my audio?
You're, oh, I, I, I will take my direction from uh, Dean and Sean. Uh, I think what, what would be advisable would be to go through uh, the issues raised in your uh, mem, emails and memorandum, councilmember Hakamovich and councilmember Friedman. Uh, get real clarity on each and every one of those things. Probably report back to all of you. And then um, with suggestions of where modifications could be made.
Yeah, and I recall seventeen forty-four was one of those items that was on the, I call it the original green highlighted list. Uh, I actually, council, you had added it. We took it off for um, some, making sure that uh, personal issues that was currently going on um, was resolved, plus we had the other priorities that were listed. So I can see that that would be tucked into a play at some level of priorities and go through the level of discernment um, that we need to have with the questions and issues raised. And I, I, I see that that would follow right in with everything else. And Rich, if I'm not mistaken, the whole component around um, Fire Department, at least from a safety perspective and the, and the, and the work of Public Works is in municipal code. So at least at present, there is that level of discussion and looking at all the various factors that might be unique in a particular home in order to make the best outcome. It will not and does not more than likely, unless, Rich, you tell me that they do take into consideration some of the other reasons why things come down a lane. Uh, but I believe all of that is, is up, up and up.
Yeah, they, I mean, basically, you know, the, we have a lot of existing private easement, private roads. And that's, you know, they're going to require the sprinklers, they can get in there. There's been numerous times, they've gotten in there for different fires in the last few years. Um, so they're doing that, but you know, with the, they're within in that code, it's also in the fire code, so we can refer to that later if we need to. It's really going to be for more, for new development. Like Dean said, we got a potential uh, three lot shore plaque coming in, not sure how it's going to be laid out. So they might dare require a hammerhead turnaround in it. And I just say, for instance, if, you know, I just, Bellevue Christian decides to leave town and they sell that property and somebody wants to change the zoning on it to residential, you have a big development going in there that would require cul-de-sacs and possible hammerheads and stuff going in there. So, it, it really, right now, it's for new developments.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Friedman?
Yeah, um, I just want to make it clear, I'm not suggesting that there's necessarily a problem with the practice, maybe not even the code. I'm not complaining about it, it's just looking for some consistency and um, and an understanding and, and maybe communication to set, to the extent that we need to do that. But um, and, and, because thirteen oh eight two twenty was, was the fire hydrant issue, you got it all over town, which, which, with a code that isn't being necessarily followed and, and I don't know that, and as, as we understand, the Fire Department doesn't, doesn't have a problem with, with the locations, they know where they are as long as they can find them, that's a key. And there's other ones, and they're all listed here. And so the question, and you know, I, 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 I don't know whether, Mayor, you're suggesting we take this and put this on to the priority list of the items we're talking about, or this comes in a separate, we handle this kind of uh, in a more simplistic manner, so.
To, to, to me, it feels like adding it on the priority listing, because it's going to be, again, the same group of people that needs to kind of flesh out and make decisions on what things that we may change or not change. Um, and I think we, we've had this anyways on that, it's just that we shortened that priority listing just of recent, but these are all the next ones uh, third queue, I think. Um, Dean Roland?
Not muted, there we go. Uh, so the fire hydrants belong to Bellevue Utilities, and it sounds like perhaps they could use a uh, reminder that perhaps it's time to come clear vegetation around some of the uh, fire hydrants.
Okay, so, okay, so I, I, I think we're done with the consistent code enforcement email, and we discussed that. And so it, in, in, if people are okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the the second attachment. Oh, are we, transitions delivered, is there anything else on the first item? Okay, so um, the, the second one around fire hydrants. Um, councilmember Friedman and I took the feedback to heart from the mayor's enforcement memo. Uh, the document invited council to repeal or consider amending the parts of the code as it says there on the, on the first slide. And so uh, we started looking around and uh, you know, there are a bunch of pictures of fire hydrants that makes you feel like you're playing Where's Waldo? Uh, but before we get there, um, here's municipal code. Um, it says hydrants should not be obstructed or have hydrant visibility impaired. Uh, and this is from nineteen seventy-three. Um, there's, it's not being enforced. Um, and it turns out that that's okay. Uh, if you go into the additional context, because we have the email from Bellevue Fire Department that they're fine with the existing code language within the international fire code that's been adopted. Um, so they don't need the, it's not like they have visibility issues. The visibility issue that's in the Clyde Illinois School Code is entirely up to Clyde Hill to enforce. Bellevue Fire, I think, doesn't really care. I'm sure there's a very technical way of saying that, but I don't know. Um, and it's not being enforced. And so, following the mayor's invitation from um, the memo, there's, I think there's an interesting discussion around uh, if it makes sense to leave that unenforced code uh, in our municipal code. Um, and with that, if you scroll down, just to, and this is, this is illustrative, it's not definitive. You scroll down to look at the images. Um, this is just from walking the dog over a couple of weeks. There are a lot of fire hydrants where there's just no way, there's a hundred fifty, you know, unit set of visibility. Um, the good news is that since nineteen seventy-three, a bunch of other things have happened. There are GIS systems. Bellevue Fire knows where every fire hydrant is, they spend the summer going and visiting each one of them. There are these blue reflector lights that once someone tells you they exist, you'll never unsee them. Um, and you know, these are just a bunch of, oh, these are actually fire hydrants that have had longstanding, uh, using Google Map Street View. Some of the issues go back to two thousand eighteen, some of them go back to two thousand ten. Um, so that's the, that's the context. I'm uh, open, I hope to open a discussion around whether it makes sense to leave this in or um, or start addressing this by lightening the amount of code that we have for residents to complain about. Thank you.
My only thought is, and we said this upfront, is that you could walk the dog and you can choose another topic and then come back with another set of PowerPoint slides saying, here's yet another thing that's not being um, consistently uh, enforced. And so we need to fix that, or is that, is that okay, or where we need to go? Insert X on whatever topic, because we know that we have a good chunk of work in our current um, code that needs to be reflective of current practice and or updated. Um, and so it's a matter of what becomes, again, the priority and how we're going to march through it. Um, and, and get it reflective and get it updated. Um, you're, you brought forth two things here. The only thing I will say, councilmember Akamovich, I'm a little bit uncomfortable, because I would love your private, personal thing to be. I, I'm, I'm hoping all taken care of, because I know a couple of these items are relevant for you. Um, and it would be nice that that's taken care of and we can then make sure.
Well, I'm happy to look over at the complaint report, I'm happy to look over at the complaint report and note that uh, any complaints about the fire hydrant on Clyde Lane, the administration already dismissed. Separate from that, this is a council discussion, I appreciate hearing your opinion. This is a question to the rest of the council members about their thoughts here. I'm not asking for more enforcement, I'm not asking for less enforcement. Following the guidance that the mayor offered in the paper, which was the council should consider repealing or amending code in which there's no public health safety issue present. Per the fire department's feedback, it seems like there's not an issue. Per the city's enforcement priorities, there doesn't seem to be an issue. And so whatever else I do, when I go out and walk the dog and take pictures of how things are going in Clyde Hill, this one seems pretty straightforward. And I'm going to ask council members their thoughts on this. You know, I, I, I respect any opinion, this reflects conversations Councilmember Friedman and I have, trying to make sense of enforcement at large. So maybe he's a good place to start.
Comments? Councilmember Friedman?
Well, he asked me, so I'll say something. What concerns, what has concerned me over time is that is the issue of practice versus, I'll call the ordinance. And there, and, and I commented earlier, there's multiple, there are, there are several ordinances in which the practice is different. Again, I'm not complaining about it. I want, you know, the city has made, and staff has made decisions on how to, how to handle these in practice based upon many issues and I, and I know they are tied to safety in many cases. And so it's not a complaint, but where there are inconsistencies, we ought to find a way to address them. Now, the question becomes how, Mayor, you're talking about priorities. And I don't know whether we're saying this is the top priority, because we have a practice that seems to be working at some level. But I'd like, you know, it would be, I, I think over time, we have to find a mechanism to take these practices and make them into something that the public can understand and that is, reflects what we want to enforce and how we want to enforce it. I think that's how I'm thinking about it. So, but I, I'm not trying to pile this one on, there will be more, and I think there are more. And, you know, and I don't know what's wrong with finding them and addressing them in a way that becomes consistent for the community. And the right way.
Yeah, but the work of updating and making them be aligned with practice and, and, and challenging, is that the practice? Is the practice that we've been doing what everybody wants? Or does that need to be challenged or not, right? So I'm just saying that the, the work involved to kind of take a, take a look at lanes and fire hydrants that were just brought up here in this, in this topic, again, needs to then go into queue, because it's the, it's the group of people that already have their work priorities and are, then are we saying that we just, you know, we drop that into, into line and we get to that?
Yeah, no, I haven't, I haven't asked us to move that ahead of anything else, nor am I trying to define.
List is what I'm hearing.
Well, and I think if we're going to go through and update, and as you said, we want to update and amend codes effective, to be effective to the community and consistent to what we're trying to accomplish. Practice is part of that. So I'm not, you know, you're, I guess, you know, I, I'm not a fan of saying it goes on the list, but I guess that's what you're saying. It comes part of their up to, to the extent we have to tie it into Title XVII review and, and run it through Planning Commission, then we make a decision on when, where we handle that, and we've been doing that up till now. And to the extent we can handle it in another fashion, I don't understand, I'd have to understand, we could, might be able to amend it that way. But the point is, there's always going to be lots of work, I'm sorry about that. I'm, I'm confident in the staff's capability to handle it. And I want, you know, and to me, the, the issue is not, is, is that this is an item that has, it should be addressed and there's multiple ones and there will be more. And we should handle them. And we should handle them in the way that we feel we can get them accomplished in a simple, in an effective manner. And if it means that it, we're working through the rest of the Title XVII items that are at the top of the list and then this might come on in the next group and we talk that discussion, then I guess that's what we'll make, we'll help you make that decision.
Exactly. Exactly right. Okay, I'm on board with that. Councilmember Hakamovich?
You know, it's, it's a great assumption, I hadn't really thought about this. So question for Mr. Brewbaker. In the event that the council moved to, if you go back to slide two, where it actually lists CHMC thirteen oh eight two twenty, if the council moved to request for an ordinance to change thirteen oh eight two twenty to strike the text involving hydrant visibility, would that require the Title XVII process? It's over in, in chapter thirteen.
My, I'd like an opportunity to look at it, but my guess is it would not, it's a public safety issue.
Right, okay, so, okay, so this is just to what Councilmember Friedman just said about the same people in this, in the skew of work. So it's subject to someone coming back and saying, no, actually, it does need to go through this large, amazing process that, that is required by RCW. It seems like the change here would be a motion to strike this text about hydrant visibility. I don't want to make that motion until, you know, other folks in the council say if they think this makes sense or this doesn't make sense. Again, I'm trying to make sure we understand how the process works. The mayor invited us to look at parts of the code where things aren't making sense. And this is one way to try to bring it into practice. And, you know, I'm happy to listen. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Right. For me, I mean, this, you brought this up, Councilmember Hakamovich, as what you felt was kind of a, a noticed and simple thing that in practice wasn't being dealt with. And, but it's really not having any effect and there's plenty of other things that we should be spending our time on. It will take some staff time, even if it doesn't requite, require the full Title XVII process to put this in play. I think it's something that we should give some thought to, but I, to me, it just doesn't rise up on the importance of things I need to put my attention to. I mean, that, that's just my, my thought.
Okay.
Since you were asking for other council thoughts, there you go. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Staff is more than happy to take a look at the hundred and fifty foot requirement as we have the time to do so.
We're still talking cities.
I guess my question is. I'm sorry, that audio was garbled, I didn't hear you, Mayor.
Oh, I was saying that we're still, you're, you're right, that it wouldn't most likely need to go to Planning Commission. But it would be still the city blue line and legal that would be involved, you know, with the vetting and the changes, making sure, you know, we didn't trip on anything that we don't want to put the city in any level liability. So there's still that level of work is what I'm talking about. In these two examples.
I, I'm just gonna, Councilmember Friedman, does, does that level of work make sense to you? And then I'm, because you and I talked about this a bunch, and I'm just trying to make sense if, if my calibration is off here.
If there's more work to be done, I, I guess I, I accept that. What I'm, what I would want, Mayor, from administration would be if we're pointing out something that is inconsistent and that could use an amendment or clarification, it's, you know, I guess I look to you to help us prioritize what it is. And Councilmember Jones may be right, I mean, this is something that isn't maybe an issue near term, but it is an example of multiple issues that are out there that were, that we just brought up. So I'm not, you know, as I said, I wasn't, I didn't necessarily have a problem with the practice and what we're doing, they're just inconsistent. And therefore, that may not rise to the priority level of some of the other items that we need to run through. I look to you, I, I mean,
So.
I'm looking for you to tell us, where does it, you know, it's important.
Add it to the list and we will.
On the border.
Be woven into the, the work plan.
Okay, that's fine.
Let me see, Councilmember Jones, your hand was still up.
Nope, sorry.
There's a third document there, Councilmember Hakamovich?
Yeah, when to charge residents the city's attorney's fees? Very briefly, if a resident ends up appealing a building code decision, the master fee schedule today says that the city will bill them, will bill the resident the city's attorney fees. I think this is a poor policy for several reasons. They're there on the first page of the document. MRSC offered an opinion, I think that it sets up some perverse incentives for a city. It also appears that none of the other points communities do this. I'm not going to read the entire document out loud. The second page offers some policy discussion points that I'd, I'd love to hear feedback from the rest of the council on. I will start with a personal disclosure. This applied to me. The city sent me a bill for the city attorney's fees for an appeal that I started filing. And the city recently decided to drop its request that I pay the city attorney's fees after some discussions. And you can see a bill on page two that reflects some of those discussions. So at this point, this doesn't affect me at all. This is a going forward for other residents, because I would like to make sure that other residents don't experience what I experienced for the period of time when I was offered that bill. This is a topic that I've discussed over the last year or so with different council members. And so to me, this is a straightforward discussion around what does the city council want the city policy to be? We are capable of changing the master fee schedule. City council approved this master fee schedule in two thousand eighteen. I'm curious to hear what the other council members would like to do on this front. Thank you.
Council? Councilmember Moore?
Well, it seems to me, I mean, reading the memo, that we should address this in the fee, in the master fee schedule. That's been updated in a few years. And I think that's where these fees are spelled out and policies and stuff like that. So I, I would just propose that that, we bring that up for discussion maybe next month or whenever Councilmember Hakamovich thinks we should do it, and I think we should look at it. I also was disappointed, I guess, to be the right word, just to note in his memo that the city spent three thousand dollars in legal fees trying to determine whether or not they could charge him eight thousand dollars of legal fees, that they ultimately decided they couldn't. All of which just sounds like a waste of public funds and taxpayer money. So I do think this is, you know, it feels like something that we can take action on very quickly. Unlike having to change the codes, this is something that we could do swiftly, and I think we should do that. Thank you.
You're on mute.
So I can't read my lips. I'm going to tread as lightly as I can here. So it's, I believe the issue is really an application of how or interpretation of how it is written currently and based on the advice that we had from previous legal counsel. It was being interpreted that way. It has since been changed, and so I'm not necessarily sure that the code needs changing as much as moving forward, we apply it with the guidance we've been given.
I would only say that if we've had different interpretations on how it's written and if that makes sense, then we run the risk of it being, continue to be confused and perhaps inconsistent.
Well, we, we subsequently had both in alluding to what Councilmember Moore said, we had both of the last two attorneys take a look at it since it was conflicting advice and we have subsequently taken action.
So maybe we can take it back and have clarity and provide that back to council so we can let them know kind of history and where it's at, perhaps. Let me see.
I'm going to defer to Tom.
Yeah, let me see, Councilmember Moore is next.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify, this is, what I'm proposing is not a matter of changing code. It's a matter of changing the master fee schedule. Master fee schedule is a several-page document that outlines the different fees that the city can charge for things, everything from building permits to, I don't know, you name it, basically, where you need some kind of permission from the city. It also specifies fees for appeals of decisions and says, and it has in there that the city will charge residents, I believe it has that in there, for certain things. So that can very easily be changed, that's not a change in the law, that's a change in a policy. And the policy is outlined in the master fee schedule, so that's what I'm proposing.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Just reinforcing what Councilmember Moore said, I think we should move on in the agenda. This matter should be dealt with, with the fee schedule review when that happens normally and be taken care of in that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Tom?
I just echo what, what Dean Rolla said. It, it, I don't think it really requires a change, it's an interpretation. The, the, the fee schedule says you can charge for consultants. If the city needs to hire a surveyor or a wetland specialist during appeal, that may be chargeable to the appellant. But you can't charge legal fees incurred during the appeal, the city, that the city incurs during the appeal. And that's an interpretation issue. So, and I, and I have, have recommended that they not be charged. So I, I'm not sure you really need, when you get back to looking at that schedule, I suppose you might want to look at other revisions. I don't think that language in particular needs to be revised.
And then finally, Councilmember Hakamovich?
You know, I, I think it's a lot of fun now that we're at the other side of this to say, of course, it should be this way. I think the master fee schedule explicitly calls out attorney fees, I'm not saying anything more, consultant's fees. The fact that explicitly calls out attorney fees and the previous attorney decided that they should be charged and that the public took interest in this recently makes me think that there's a very simple fix. I think that if we modify the master fee schedule and strike the word attorney in a few places related to appeals, we fix this and then Clyde Hill residents are no longer frankly, subject to the whim of how administration and who are the city attorney is at that time choose to interpret this. I believe that we modify the master fee schedule to remove the attorney fees for appeals as we've discussed here.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Steve.
Now we have discussion. Dean Rolla, your hand is up.
So.
We've had all the discussion that, I'm super sorry, just like, I think we just did the full discussion, because I only made the, the, the motion now. And I was going to call for a vote, sorry.
Can I at least ask a question? I believe that there are times when attorney fees could be a viable impact if we had to go get an attorney from outside to rule on something in a specialist area on an appeal. An attorney could be a valid fee that's not our staff attorney. This is going to be my question to Mr. Brewbaker.
That's correct, it would be in the nature of an expert witness fee. Is this, I'm trying to remember, does this, does the, does the schedule get adopted by a resolution?
Yes, yes.
I recommend, we bring, I recommend that we, you know, pull that resolution, look at all those fees and look at that language and bring to you a revised master fee schedule with, and if it does, I apologize, if it does reference attorneys, I did not, I thought it said consultants, so I, I I did not, I thought it said consultants, so I need to revisit that language myself.
Okay, so here's, here's why I, I hear you, I completely agree with you. The point of this motion is just see whether it's worth to go off and do that revision. Because if council doesn't want to do this, there's no point in going off and doing the fine tune editing. I don't expect this motion. I'm happy to amend the motion. I move
I have another.
Whatever was earlier, and I will defer to Mr. Brubaker here, that this is about returning with a draft, like, is there sufficient consensus that it's worth doing this? Does that make sense? Help me craft this motion, please, or help me amend the motion on the table, Mr. Brubaker.
I think what you're asking is that staff revisit the language on fees on appeal and the master fee schedule and report back with a revision, particularly if the, if it specifically charges specifically allows the city to charge its own attorney's fees in defending an appeal.
I will, I will go with that. I would like to see if the. So just going in order to be interested in see if.
I'd also just like to point out, once the motion is presented, it needs a second, it got a second. That's usually when discussion starts. I know there's been discussion prior to, and that's fine, too. If you want to end discussion, it would be an amendment to the motion to end debate, end debate. So just trying to give you a framework.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I saw their hands raised, so I'm not going to do that just yet. Go ahead.
All right. So technically, we have a motion on the table that's been seconded. We're still in the discussionary period. So Councilmember Friedman.
So maybe, maybe there's another way we can skin this cat with respect to this. On the assumption near term we have a practice not to charge attorney's fees. I, I'm of the opinion that with respect to our budget, we should be revisiting our, our fee schedule anyway for areas that we should adjust, increase, or in this case, eliminate. It's on, is part of what I had in my priorities, I think it's elsewhere, too. And so maybe we're just, we're more efficient if we tie this back into the budget process and have the city attorney review to eliminate those fees. And then we have a practice that we're following near term if we need to. I'm just trying to find a way to, in a way that maybe we can benefit, we can get, accomplish a few things.
We want to be able to look into it and bring it back to you what those proposed changes are. Let me see here, Councilmember Moore? Just come off me at first.
Sorry, can I, I'd like to request that the staff email the current master fee schedule to the council so that we can take a look at the whole thing. I think we're, we're going a little too far in the weeds here without looking at it. And it'd be useful to look at the whole thing because it covers a lot of ground.
Yeah.
You know, there are, there are more than just one or two things that I think we might want to actually look at. So.
Yeah. Takes a little bit of vetting that we have not had time to do. I go to Dean Rola.
So the mast, updating the master fee schedule is on our to-do, is on staff's to-do list. We simply haven't had the bandwidth to do it. One of the other items that we've been wanting to do as part of this, and it actually plays well to the budget, has been to, we've made no changes in it since 2018, as I recall, and we were looking to try and put an automatic trigger in there that would basically just apply the CPI to it on an annual basis and to try and keep some sort of pace with inflation on our, on our fees. So that is already on the, on our list of priorities as Councilmember Friedman alluded to. Just need the ability to do it.
Okay. Be asking this for Lisa for the budget like what Councilmember Friedman said and give you time to vet it, share it out as Councilmember Moore wanted. And then we can be prepared to have that discussion. That's what I'm hearing in this discussion period.
That completely works for me.
Pardon me?
So I think the, what I, what I heard is current master fee schedule from 2018 goes out to council and that it enters the budget process and as part of the whole budget, everything, we review it there. That time makes sense to me. I'm not sure if there's a way to withdraw the motion because the alternative proposed is just fine.
Well, what you guys can do if we're done with discussion is we go to vote. You vote it down and we move on.
Great.
Any more discussion? So vote appropriately here, guys. All those in favor of this, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Any abstaining? Otherwise confused, not, okay, so that unanimously is voted down and we have committed to putting it into the budget process for review of the fee schedule. And make sure you guys get mailed out that and have a chance for us to vet and share.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Good job. Now we're on to city celebration and the memo there. And so Dean and Courtney, I know you guys have been busy trying to get our evening prepared, but would you like to reinforce?
I will just give a high-level overview. The city celebration and movie night is next Friday, August 19th at Clyde Hill Elementary School. The festivities will start at six o'clock with some field activities. There'll be several booths set up for community outreach. And then the movie will start at dusk, which is around 8:30 on a giant outdoor screen. So if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer anything.
We're gonna ice cream and popsicles, right?
Ice cream and popsicles and refreshments and some other light snacks.
Do we normally put a notice up that we might have OPMA? I don't know how many of our council are hoping to pop in just in case, but I encourage you, even if it's just for a few moments, say hi and be seen be visible, a chance to reinforce, get our residents to take the survey and get them engaged, anything and all that would be great. Anything further to add? Any questions? You know, scheduling, know the times, happy to see you there. Thank you, Courtney, I know you've really worked hard as always on this and appreciate your energy there.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to section six, consent agenda. I may have a motion to approve the July 12 regular city council meetings, July 26, special session city council meeting and to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second, Jones.
Second, Ben Jones, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? unanimously, we will take care of that consent agenda, thank you. We now are going to move into a closed session. This is to discuss the collective bargaining position and strategy as allowed by the RCW 42.30.1404B. The council is not expected to take action after this session. We anticipate 20 minutes. And so what we're going to do with this is to ask council, Dean Rola should have sent you a, another meeting invite tonight. If you want to leave this meeting, go join that meeting. I have to go into the other room, I'll be with you in just a moment. We will hold our closed session. And if for any reason we go longer, I'll come out and prolong it. And if not, we'll be done and be able to come back and continue our agenda. Crystal clear, you leave this meeting and go to the other meeting.
And then when we're done, we'll come back to this other meeting.
Come back and you come back into this meeting. Okay.
Well, I think, just checking, I think we have to actually hang up on this meeting or if it's like Zoom, you, you can't have two teams meetings at the same time. Yeah.
Yeah, or they'll put you on hold, but you can leave and then you can come right back in on this meeting after that one. No problem.
Good.
Okay, we'll see you over there. So.
Happy birthday, guy.
Thank you. I didn't even bother to ask, but now might be a good time as people are coming back. Do you guys need a five-minute bio break? We've been at this for two hours, I don't know if you. I have nerve splatter, so I'm, I can go forever. Okay, no one screaming. We get everybody back, Courtney?
Just double check here. I think we're. I think everyone's back.
Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you all very much. We're back from the closed session. Again, no direct action is being taken that I have directions, so that's great. Okay, section number eight, no public hearings. Section number nine, here are some motions for consideration. The first one, 9.1 is all yours, Sean, you the man of the month here.
All right.
I think you queued us up a little bit earlier on it, so.
Yeah, I did, there's, some of this is definitely going to be come together a little bit. I'm actually gonna try to connect my other laptop so I can look at you in the eye. If it lets it, there we go. So I'm kind of here, so, so again, and I understand, we did update this memo, so apologies, but it was updated at the very end, tossed in there. So this is the news, the staff report for this small drainage program project was updated to reflect the new recommendation of staff, if I can get this thing to open. So if you look on this screen, what we wanted to more or less talk to you guys about is, is the way that the bids came in. We spent some time reviewing them, but ultimately what we decided and what our recommendation is, is to reject the bid and, and come at it again. And the primary reason for that is we don't feel that it's in the best interest of the city at this point to award to the current low bidder. In the staff report, you'll see an updated table that sort of describes kind of the challenge we faced in, in the way that the bid proposal came through. So it's, the basis for award was schedule A, which is base work plus B, which is alternate work. So that was the basis for award, the total of A plus B. We ended up in a situation where the A was significantly higher than, than the A, than the next bidder. And in the situation where we didn't assume that we would be able to award B. So we'd be paying a premium cost for A work, again, not in the interest of the city. So all of that is reflected in there, it is pretty complicated. It's not ideal, an ideal situation by any means, but again, we do provide as much information as we can. So how we would approach this is, is we would recommend that the council make a motion to reject those bids and authorize us to go back out and re-advertise. This could be done very quickly. We would probably be advertising by the end of this week, Friday, in the paper and then bids due toward the end of August. So we also, in this, in the recommendation language, and it can be modified as necessary, we do also request that the council authorize the mayor to execute a contract within the current approved budget as well. So that provides us the ability to move forward as quickly as humanly possible, rather than waiting for the next city council meeting. So that is a lot of information, it's a complex subject. We tried to distill it down and make it as simple as possible. So I welcome questions or comments.
And/or you have the recommendation for the motion. If you feel comfortable with what Sean has shared, you'd be certainly welcome to have that motion.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Muramoto, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Or abstained? All ready?
I'm so sorry, I thought you wanted the, I thought you wanted this voted down. I'm so sorry, I thought you were waiting.
No, you're right, we were, we're, yes, to reject the bid, so.
Okay.
It is a positive for a negative action, so you're correct.
Okay.
Should I clarify? The favors say aye. There you go. And anyone opposed? Thank you. Then it passes unanimously. Sean, you have your directives there, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, 9.2, I think we're still with you, Sean.
All right, so again, this is for another bid we received on the same day as the small drainage program, but this is for crack ceiling. This is reasonably easy, we had four responsive bidders, we had a decent spread in cost. But again, a clear, oh, well, very tight competition, but a clear award and clear result. So this project is also supported by the existing roadway capital or roadway funds in the budget. And then also 90% TIB match, or I guess our match is 10%. So we, and we recommend award for the, of the contract with due little construction.
All right. With that explanation, the memo, is there a motion?
I saw a move to accept that.
Is there a second?
Second, Muramoto.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Ready, and anyone opposed? And we will pass that unanimously as well.
Thank you.
All right, Sean, you're on a roll, want to go for 9.3?
You know, I don't know if I'm on this one, but, but sure. I don't know if Dean was gonna talk on this one, but.
Dean, what are you gonna share on this? Come off me, Dean. Dean, you're on mute. I know it.
I hate talking to myself, doggone it. Right, this.
I think Steve, I think Steve is trying to connect. Can we just give him a moment? I think he's having a connection issue.
Okay, thank you, thank you for keeping an eye out.
I felt like we were like a vote short on.
I know, some of the models move and it's kind of hard.
I think he's part of the Team Suck movement that I'm on.
You, you still have a quorum with four members present, so the votes are all still good.
Thank you.
So you're saying you want me to keep talking or not talk?
Hang on one second, I think we're trying to get Councilmember Friedman back with us. I know, technology is great, when it's not, it's not great.
Okay, he's about to dial in because the interweb is not cooperating.
Okay, thank you. Too many of us are on it.
That makes no sense.
Thank you all for your patience. Poor guy. This point. Be that either.
I won't let Dean move in mine.
All right. Any questions for Rich? I'll have you guys raise your hands and clap through these. All right, Sean, keep going for the moment.
All right, so I'll try to be quick, again, typical layout here, so Cruzman. So crew's been busy doing lots of maintenance work around town, as you would expect. One of the big things to be aware of that we're going to start kicking off, you might see, is the city's joining the adopted drain stormwater program. So that is run through a university in like Minnesota. So they actually have a lot of Northwest cities that have signed on. And again, it's regional planning and outreach effort that helps satisfy our stormwater requirements. So provides us a lot of benefit in that sense. Parks, we have a couple of things going on. So we have the Eagle Scout is working on a project to replace our signs. So we have some kind of older signs in Clyde Hill Park. There is a history of this being done by Eagle Scouts. And so again, we're providing that opportunity right now. I think it has opportunity pretty neat, but again, it's kind of a traditional approach. So we're working with them pretty actively on that right now. And we'll, I'll keep you updated on, on all that. We're also moving forward a couple of the park CIP projects, trying to utilize some of the levy funding and continue maintenance and kind of expansion opportunities for the park. In the storm system, we did have our annual DOE review on 7/27. So there was a number of items that they identified that had actually been addressed already. Actually, Mary performed a lot of the really minor text edits and changes. There was some additional information that we're working on addressing, and we will be following up by August 19th. We do have one G20 non-compliance letter that is being prepared and will be submitted for an item that's already resolved. It was the posting of the actual annual report as a PDF on the website. So it was not done in time and prior to, to the date. So already resolved, but again, a non-compliance letter. I actually have a maintenance S R P's, standard operating procedures. This is again, a DOE requirement to be updated by the end of the year. So I've tasked one of the crew members, Tyler, into developing those. So he's been spending some time investigating other cities, seeing what the requirements are. And again, it's been a good opportunity for him to take something off my shoulders that, that, you know, we're struggling for time to do and also give him an opportunity to do something, something new. So along those lines, private system inspections also are coming up and are really important for us to get going soon. Once again, Mary, the intern, was really helpful in doing a lot of door hangers and project notices that have been updated. And then we're looking at, at using a new, not a new, but a new to us system called Microsoft Bookings, I guess, which should help streamline our scheduling effort. So rather than us fielding 150 phone calls and doing 150 schedules, it should all be done online, we're hoping. So fingers crossed that, that's what actually happens. So so the streets, again, we had crack sealing bids on this. You guys are quite aware of what we're doing. Thank you very much for supporting that. It is a requirement from the Transportation Improvement Board for future preservation projects. So we're setting ourselves up pretty well by crack sealing the roads that we are to future, to request funds for them in the future from TIB. Speaking of TIB, their, their grants are due at the end of next week. So the two candidate projects that we're looking at would be one with the Northeast 20th sidewalks and one would be the Northeast 20th overlay. So we're kind of looking at one or the other, probably leaning towards 20th sidewalks. As, you know, we've kind of been indicated, we could probably ask for something in the $300,000 range. So it's still a significant money fund. But again, the, the 20th Street sidewalks is a REIT eligible item as it's a capital improvement, rather, more so than an overlay. So that's where we're headed towards. Again, if we don't receive those funds, private doesn't have to move forward. So and that is all I have at this time. End of report.
Busy, busy.
Great.
Ready? We'll keep it going unless somebody stops me. We have Dean giving the report for finance. Anything further? Oh, actually, you have code compliance. Sorry.
Sorry.
Make sure that we see that.
Two-screen experience. So embarrassed to say, I didn't even look at this, but this is the code compliance report. Again, we had some discussion with council, the council committee about making updates and how they like to see this. So unless there's questions or sir wants to add anything, it's all there.
It's our continued log that we're providing. All right, not seeing anything further. Then Dean, back to you for finance report, budget calendar priorities.
Right, so Ms. King is on the, is out tonight. Did I, I can go through the report or it's long and we've already, if anybody has any questions, we can try and talk about those.
Yeah.
The other thing that beyond the report would be that this is where we stuck council member Friedman's email regarding priorities and things for the budget, kind of just as a, as a look and a reminder to the rest of you. If you have anything to either chip in based on what he said or on anything else of your own, to go ahead and submit those ASAP. So I can roll them into the, the budget memo here in the next couple of days.
We appreciate councilman Friedman putting some thought into that because at the high level, it's really helpful to know how we want to, you know, list the key priorities. I know tactics and objectives will all fall in line. So please feel free to contribute or at least be prepared for some discussion on this on the 18th. All right, I'm sure we're going to have a lot more money talks, so we can probably save that for the 18th anyways. Moving on then, chief, please report.
Just that, the biggest news we have in the police department is Officer Lyon and his wife welcomed a baby boy on Sunday. They're all doing well. We had a great Fourth of July down in Yarl Point with the parade and points celebration. Other than that, it's been kind of a quiet summer, so.
Yeah, you guys did a nice job. Thank you for your support. I know it was rallying it back after COVID, so it's good that you got back out there. Okay, anything else, chief?
That's all I have.
Okay, and then Dean, public records request. Is it just having a report there?
Yeah, I, you know, I confess, I didn't talk to John about this report ahead of time. Yeah, I, he was out today, so does anybody have any questions on, on this report? Is it giving you what you want? Is there something that you need more?
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so question on the first report, City Hall records. The fourth column says total time. Is that hours?
John was changing this over. Do you know the answer to that, Dean?
I, I don't. I'm going to have to, I'll have to get back to you on that one. I, I'm looking at a tiny little screen here tonight, unfortunately.
I'm going to guess hours. I'm going to guess.
I'm assuming it's ours.
Because, okay, so that was my assumption too. I'm kind of scratching my head. On the next last page, there was a mail stream that we had around some feedback from Bellevue Fire. And at some point, because I was only reading excerpts, I said, please send me the entire mail stream with all the parties. And then, you know, I got forwarded a piece of email that was just one thread of email that everyone, that the right staff people had been on. I saw this listed, and I'm trying to figure out how that's 26 hours. And that just seemed absolutely amazing to me.
Slides into third, his phone comes out of his pocket. Now that's a first.
Okay.
I don't have an answer for you. It does seem like a large number of hours. There must be more of that story.
So why don't, yeah. Let's ask John to clarify and be prepared of that one. Apologize, he was not able to join us to see.
Okay.
He was originally prepared.
Um, second piece of feedback is that the PDR tracker, as printed, is kind of useless because the first half of the pages have a bunch of columns. And then the last column is the second half of all the pages. And so it requires a very geometric imagination to actually use this successfully.
Good point.
Yeah, not working well on a 13-inch surface either.
Okay, we can look at the format. Thank you.
And I hope, go ahead.
Sorry, Dean, I can't tell anybody and apologize. Basically, I'm, John's report, I have no clue what he's telling me here. I don't understand it at all. It would be nice if he gave us a description of what he's trying to tell us. And if he's going to put hours in, it was consistently supplied, he's going to put, but I suppose a beginning ending dates, it was consistently supplied in information. This report didn't, didn't help. I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's not, it didn't work well in this format.
Okay, that's good feedback. We'll get it there. We'll get it, what you guys want. All right, any other feedback that we can take back? Those are good. All right. Okay, we'll get back to work on that. Going to move on then, if you're okay, then to section 11, the mayor and council reports. We actually have a meeting and Dean, remember you're covering tomorrow for the points mares. There's still ongoing, we actually took over the, we canceled the meeting just for the month, but yet we put another one back in to have further discussions around 520 and the lid maintenance and some of the changes therein. So everyone from Katie Harris at Yarl Point, of course, Sabie at Hunts Point, and even Jessica over there at Madonna, they're really working their angles, meeting with council members, senators, representatives, you name it, they're, they're working hard to get everybody to understand and appreciate our situation and make sure that we're getting monies and on their dime and their resources to keep the maintenance going. So just want to let you know, this is continued efforts on all of our parts. And let me see here, I had a public health meeting and I just suffice it to say that if, I'm going to guess we're getting into a next wave of VA 4.6, I think is on my radar. But now we have monkeypox, so that'd create the entire protocol for how we're going to manage monkeypox going on. So our state in the last week have doubled the numbers. So pay attention if that's of any concern for, for you or any family or friends. All right, East Side Transportation Products Project, Councilmember Muramoto.
Actually, the, we're going to have a joint tri-county meeting on the 24th, so I will report out in September.
Very good. Thank you. SCA, I think you have a link for the pick meeting. They canceled it for last, well, they had that one. Yeah, July was canceled. They had a networking event and then they were waiting to, no, August was canceled. I'm sorry. I'm so confused. One of them was canceled. Must be August. We had a networking session that was unable to attend, so I'll fill you in. There didn't seem to be anything that I had to bring up and get consensus on prior to the meeting. Um, Ms. Wack, Councilmember Friedman.
Um, last meeting was canceled. The next one is Friday, so nothing to report.
Very fair. Councilmember Muramoto, Lake Washington Cedar Semamish Watership, all right.
Yep, not till September, third week in September, so I'll report back in on cover.
Very good. Emergency Management Committee, we did not have last month. They canceled that. And we have a meeting tomorrow and didn't look like anything majorly of concern. I'll let you know after that occurs tomorrow. Anybody else been to meetings or other events to share or highlight? Seeing none, then we have down here under section 12, future agenda topics. Just making sure we know and have our calendars in sync, August 18. So that's our second meeting for the month, but that one's dedicated to the Budget Advisory Committee meeting. That's at 6:00 PM. And we'll get diving into our 2023 budget discussions and some of the other goals and priorities. Dean, anything else to reinforce on that? I think you said it prior.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, and then make sure, please, hopefully you can come and join us. 6:00 PM start, 8:30 or so movie for the August 19th city celebration. And then we know that at least at this point, rules and guidelines, budget amendment, DOE grant supplement, are potential items for our September 13th city council regular meeting. So we'll continue to build topics, no doubt, but just early indicators there. Budget Advisory Second Committee, make sure on your calendar, 6:00 PM on September 27. What am I forgetting? Anything of major urgency or concern? Good job. You guys stepped through it all. I appreciate it. Think we can say, oh, no, there's always one more. All right, Attorney Tom.
I just wanted to remind everyone that I'll be gone most of the month of September. Sharon Kate's from my office will be sitting in on your council meeting on the second Tuesday of September. Please be kind to her. She hasn't been, you know, attending all the meetings like me. So she may need to be brought up to speed on a couple of points and.
Apologize ahead of time on that one, Tom, for her, to her, for us, please.
Okay. And I'll be back, I think it's the, around the 22nd of September. So if you do have that workshop, the fourth Tuesday, I should be able to attend that. Thank you.
Hopefully we can be efficient on our staff meetings and we can not need those, but we'll, we'll see what happens. We've got lots of work, kind of. All right, everybody else, if really okay, going, going, gone. I will call us adjourned. Thank you, one and all.
Right.